Who has the proclamation, Kathy?
Which proclamation?
For Empower Erie.
That would be after your prayer and stuff. Laurie, I think we're ready to go.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, October 20th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for the pledge and silence.
Okay, before we have the moment of silence, we'd be really remiss if we didn't acknowledge the fact that we lost one heck of a guy, and I always call him Mr. Russo. Pete Russo passed away. He was an educational leader, a scholastic leader, an athletic leader in our town for a long time, and he'll be missed. Michael?
And if we could also honor the general, the statesman, Colin Powell. We lost him this past week also.
No prayer?
Yeah, a moment of silence, then prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to assemble among the city today and with the fellow council persons, and we just ask that you give us the wisdom to make good prudent decisions on behalf of this city. We ask that you uplift those who need an uplift and that you stand with those who are in need. We ask this in your name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 6, 2021 city council meeting and bills per payment on October 22nd and October 29th. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. We have a shout out again to two Penn State Baron students, Madison and Brooke. They're here for their political science, state and urban politics class to observe, and we also welcome members of Empower Erie.
Ms. Schoff?
Thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. Thank you, Mrs. Watson. As an educator and a member of city council, I am so excited to be presenting to our Erie Empower people, your dedication, your commitment, your unwavering spirit. You never gave up. It's a great thing to have goals and have dreams, but to follow through with them is so important. You did not let that dream die. Your group persevered all the roadblocks and you kept on forging ahead no matter what. Your team together enables Erie to have a brighter future. Our students are eagerly joining in. They're going to be learning skills. They're going to have an education that will lead them to full employment, to better themselves, their families, and Erie. And I am just so grateful, so thankful to honor you today in some very small way. So, this is resolved by the council of the city of Erie that whereas Empower Erie... and how about if you all stand up and come on up? So, I would love for you to do that if you can, or just stand where you are, that's fine too. But come on up.
Ron, at your age, can you make it? Adam, would you? My former student.
David Brennan, you're a part of this as well, so.
Can you join us here?
Empower Erie, a group of people that set their sight on doing what their name says by empowering Erie through education. Whereas Empower Erie diligently set their goal to provide the people of Erie and the surrounding area with higher educational opportunities, empowering them to soon be gainfully employed with the help of a standalone community college. Whereas Empower Erie used several communication strategies to update the community through social media, newsletters, local news pieces, videos, media outreach, and direct communication to share their goal of reaching a community college in Erie. And whereas Empower Erie received the support of the local county and city government and achieved the goal of Governor Tom Wolf designating the Community College Act of 1963, and Empower Erie received acceptance with the approval of the application for establishment of the Erie County Community College by the Pennsylvania State Board of Education on July 8th, 2020. And therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Erie that this commendation is hereby presented to Empower Erie. Our congratulations to have persevered throughout these years and attained their goal of opening a standalone community college to those seeking post-high school education, opening windows of opportunities for them. And for this, I am so grateful, and my council, along with me, would like to present to you this commendation. So, I'm going to read off all of the current members, past members, interns, and consultants. Carl Anderson III, Timothy McNair, Judy Roth, David Brennan, Robert Casilo, George Espy, Kathy Fatika, Danny Jones, Sam Tellerico, Ronald Di Nicola, Cheryl Rush Dix, Charles Mock, Steve Shillo, Linda Stevenson, Lisa Miller, Ariel Dodick, Damali Donovan, E.J. Fike, Emily Fink, Zach Schwartz, Joe Maloney, Scott Westcott, Kate Phillips, Nicole Parker. So, thank you so much for taking the time to come here today. Again, I am so honored.
While you're shaking hands, I was on the actual first meeting. Mr. Giles set up over 125 people at the county courthouse to discuss doing this community college thing, but it took one guy, and I was picking on Ron, but he had the guts to hang on to the steering wheel with a lot of help from the rest of you folks too, but he wouldn't give up. And because he didn't, we're gonna have it. I think it's a wonderful thing. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Short notice.
Uh, everybody just kind of jumping around now?
Oh, man.
Carl, we're missing a picture.
Wait for Carl.
Uh, Donald, if you would, step up, guys, for a second, we need a photo.
All right.
No one is standing next to Ron.
We will move.
That means you're tall.
Get out there.
President Brzezinski, uh, please, sir. Um, Mr. Keys, can you look at me? Everybody look at me? All right, one, two, three. Okay, turn around. So, you didn't get a good smile. It's a nasty smile.
What happened this past week or so? You have a son that's an attorney, huh? Congratulations. The fourth, right? Super.
Madam?
I got repository, what? Does anybody on their repository?
No.
Okay, to continue on, is there anyone here to speak about repository sales? If you could come up to the microphone.
Do we have a list for that?
Yes, would you like to look at it right now?
Good afternoon, we're in the neighborhood of North Park, first property located in Buffalo Road. There is no address, but there is a parcel of property located between 1611 Buffalo Road and 1623 Buffalo Road.
Sir, is your mic green on? Press that little button.
Okay. All right, it's on now.
Start with your name again, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry. My name is Adam Kornau, and I'm here for a repository list, and I would like to purchase a property. There is no address on the property, but it is located between 1611 Buffalo Road and 1623 Buffalo Road. I'm a current owner of a property 1611, so the property sits right next to my property, and I would like to buy it just as an extension to my property. The property right now is vacant. There's no structure on the property. There is, needs to be some trees cut down and just kind of like maintenance overall. That's about it.
You want to read the list?
Huh?
Answer the questions on the list?
Yeah, like I said, you know, is the property vacant? Yes, it is vacant. What is my plans for the property? Is just adding extra land to my existing property, just for extra yard, and what condition? The condition of our property is just trees, bushes, needs to be trimmed up, just... and if I live near the property, yes, I pretty much live right next to the property, and I'll be cutting, you know, just maintaining like my rest of my property, cutting trees, you know.
Sir, you're just...
You're just planning on extending your property as having green space for...
Yes.
Where you live now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for investing in the city.
Thank you.
So, your address here is listed as 1601 Merdo.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it is 16... well, yes, that's my... that's where I live right now with my parents, but I am the owner of 1611 Buffalo Road.
Okay, so, is it rented, or do you actually reside at the 16...
When I purchased that property, it was not horrible, it was kind of like poor condition, and I would... and I'm still doing renovation and remodeling inside, as like still weather is nice outside, I still do some stuff around the yard, but when it gets a little bit colder, I'll be start doing stuff inside. And I'm the owner of the property since 2018.
I thank you because Buffalo Road is regenerating, so I'm thankful that you are taking the time and effort to repurpose and renew.
Yeah, the Buffalo Road is, like they call it, is a land of opportunity or a street of opportunity, that kind of like, because it slows the changes to a different direction and... and yeah, you'll be in shock how much trash I pick up on the side of a road in about a week. Half of a can of garbage just being tossed out from people walking by and so... Yep. Any other questions you guys would like to ask?
Have you officially filed the paperwork?
Yes, I did.
He'd be voted on next meeting.
Okay.
My name is Kevin Tornator. This is Ms. Tammy Wagler. We are interested in the property at 342 East 24th Street. It's adjacent to our property at 338 East 24th Street. The property is vacant. I have been keeping it clean for like four years, the front half of it, but the back is nothing but garbage, downed trees. So, I would like to purchase this property to finish cleaning it up, just to make our street look better. Uh, I don't have the question. Is there any... I think I just did that right, didn't I?
I think you did.
Okay, and I guess that's it. I just, we want the property, just to make the whole street and part of the neighborhood start to look better, instead of having these vacant lot up there, no one's doing anything with it. So, that's my request this evening.
Building neighborhoods is really our road to success.
Right.
Is that located between German and Holland?
No, German and Parade.
German Parade, okay.
A couple houses down from Eubaniacs Market.
Another location. Thank you, sir.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. President? Oh, I just want to say that thank you for stepping up. I think if everybody helps each other in the neighborhood, that just makes a stronger neighborhood, like the president said, but just thank you for stepping up and taking on this opportunity.
You're welcome. Is that it? Have a good night's evening now.
Next meeting, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, in public comments, do we have a Mr. Brett Culver here or online? He had registered to speak.
Not here? Guess he changed his mind.
Okay, anybody that wants to speak can come up to the mic. Please state your name, your address clearly.
Hi, my name is Susan Morris, and I live at 4706 Upland, and I've been here many times before, and I am, I'm here because I understand that the Airbnb issue may be addressed next month, but I wanted to be here in person, and I can't be here for that meeting. It's been 10 months since the short-term rental ordinance had been drawn up, and a few months since what I believe the amendment to that, where it was amended, has been done. And so, I felt like I'm sort of here to shake the trees, why this thing isn't moving at least a little faster. I understand there was an issue on regulation, and it is my understanding that zoning has informed council that they handle short-term rentals much like long-term rentals, exactly the same. They don't handle them any differently. The fee is paid, and that policy has been in place for a few years. So, I think people are generally honest, they pay their fee, and probably long, I mean, it's the same as trying to find a long-term rental as a short-term rental. Also, for the short-term rentals that I know of, that the zoning has had zero complaints from them, and this is in the short-term rentals, and I think of my own short-term rental, we have had 200 reservations in the last five years and 750 guests. There has been absolutely no complaints, no disruptions to the neighborhood, it's had no negative impact whatsoever, not one bit. The culture is wonderful on those streets, there's absolutely no difference. But my home has been singled out. While other Airbnbs have opened illegally in the city of Erie, I'm the one where my feet is being held to the fire. I don't really think that's fair. I think that it's time to either vote against them or vote for them. So, I'm here to, in my plea is that it would encourage council to move forward and make that vote, and of course, I would like them to approve that ordinance that's been written up, because there's really nothing to say on the Airbnbs. You've heard conversations and testimonies and stories from everyone. Most of those have actually been positive. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Whipple. I live at 6072 Hummingbird Court. I don't want to belabor the short-term rental issue any longer than necessary, as city council, as my sister stated, has all the information. However, I do have a question. How does the city locate the landlords and rentals that are currently in operation in the city? And are you sure that they are all registered? Mr. Brzezinski, at one time, stated that he was opposed to short-term rentals because you couldn't locate them. How does the city locate the ones that are actually used as rentals, and are you sure that everyone that is a landlord is registered with the city? Short-term rentals will not exist if they're not properly maintained and managed. As, you know, as my sister mentioned before, we have had literally no complaints from the zoning board or from anyone. Short-term rentals should be held accountable just the way long-term rentals are. Excuse me. Just because I have a big notebook here doesn't mean I'm gonna talk forever. And should anybody on city council have any questions about my personal experiences, both professional and private, with rentals, I would be more than happy to discuss them with you. I thank you for your time, and I hope the issue will come to a reasonable conclusion that will benefit both the city, Ev Erie, and the owners of short-term rentals. Thank you.
My name is prophetess Teresa Sims. I am a street minister, have been for 25 years, and I'm coming on the behalf of half of the poor foster children, children that go to jail, and children that don't have anywhere to play. I have been trying on my own to come and talk with individuals who claim they have powers. I'm turned away or I am ignored. But I'm in the street at night. Erie police know me very, very well, they watch over me, and I'm in the street in the daytime. I have rescued three foster children who tried to commit suicide. One cut their arms, I had to rush him to the hospital. Another one took some pills, and I just happened to run across him. And another one was getting ready to step out in front of a car, and I stopped him. As a minister of God, I asked myself, living here, it'll be 65 years in December in this city, and I say to myself, I prayed over this before I came down here, many months I prayed, and I sat back and I watched. I'm watching the poor get poor, and I'm watching the rich get richer, and I say to myself, they say they love the Lord when they can't help their fellow men. And there's something wrong. I was a nurse. I had people die in my arms. I know what that feels like to see loved ones lose people. I know what it's like to live in a home and you're old and nobody comes to visit you but me. Nobody feeds you but me. And I say to myself, they say they love the Lord, they say they love the poor, they say they love the children, but they're being lost. When you don't take care of your children in this neighborhood, you got kids that don't even have anywhere to go and play. Most of you are around my age. Remember back when we were little? We had playgrounds. We had places to gather. We had centers where we could go and play. Where is it to the children of today? We don't care about them? We care about buildings, restaurants? Think. These are the children that when you get old, you're gonna want them to take care of you and care about you. The Bible said we reap what we sow. The Bible says we reap what we sow. I have one living with me now. I had to rescue him from out of town. And I'm disabled. And I'm using my money. Three years ago, I tried to fix up the park over there on 21st and East Avenue, my neighborhood where I grew up. I came to city council. I talked to individual. Nobody wanted to hear me. Nobody cared. It's the little kids. They see people smoking dope, falling and killing themselves in the street. Why? I want to see my tax dollars go to the underdog. I want to see people who are trying to get homes, doors open up for them so they can get homes. I'm tired of you pouring people from overseas into my neighborhood and I have to watch them live the American dream. And I can't. What's wrong? God is asking, what's wrong? You said I pledged allegiance to the flag and who did you pledge to? God. But you can't help the poor. I was out here on the street when Cobra came. I begged them, please, check the homeless. You remember me? Now you got 95 people in this city because you didn't pay attention. And you represent me. You get some of my tax dollars to go home and live in beautiful homes. You fulfill dreams that they'll never see. I go into the prisons. It's the foster kids. 18 you put on the street. No education. Don't know that if you do good in school, you have a free ride for four years. I'm doing it and I'm not getting paid. What's wrong, Erie? What's wrong? You said you my city councilman. But you can't help the poor. What's wrong? You building buildings you never gonna put the poor in. What is sick? I'm here in the name of Jesus. What's wrong? Please tell me. If I'm doing something wrong, tell me.
Excuse me, Ms. Sims, your time is up. Can you?
My time wasn't up, baby. Jesus' time is never up.
Can you give me your address for the record?
718 East 21st Street.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Just one comment. Let her know that those of us who are in the streets, we know what you have done, we know what you continue to do. And we know you are there. Your name is out there in a very positive manner. And we thank you for it.
I had to go across the street from there to put those homeless kids in. I opened my door. I got in there right now. I'll say you played with the telephone in that circle.
Good evening. My name is John Whaley. I live at 447 Gordon Lane. Couple of things to talk about tonight. And I'm sorry I didn't get this lady's name. You're going to vote in a few minutes to spend $4.5 million of the CARES rescue money, a really round number on sewer repairs. Why don't you spend $4.3 million and maybe fix a playground at 21st and Ash? Or do some other things? I think that really is the spirit of what that rescue plan money was supposed to be. Not to pay for deferred maintenance that most of you have voted in the last four, eight, 12 years to not do. Secondly, the PA State Supreme Court ruled unambiguously in the Slice of Life case that Airbnbs are a transient transaction. They are illegal in an R1 designated zone in the state of Pennsylvania. They are illegal in Glenwood and Frontier, which is low-density R1. You've done nothing to stop it. There's one at the end of my street. Out-of-towners all day long. This lady lives about two blocks away. It's illegal. There's no question about it. You're doing nothing about it. You need to vote on it sooner or later. But I don't know how you usurp PA State Supreme Court. It's illegal. So what I really want to talk about is the stormwater management fee. The consultant came in, wrote a 130-page report. One of the issues was, let's raise some revenue. Let's have a stormwater management fee. Looks like we've jumped on that like a dog on a bone. We're going to race it through. A lot of questions haven't been answered. I read in the paper that maybe I'll be charged about $24. I have six-tenth of an acre. Less than 20% of that makes up my driveway in my house. So I'm dumping some water into the stormwater sewers. But most of my area is permeable soil. So I really have a lot of questions about how much you're really going to charge? Who's going to pay it? Hallman's got four acres of parking lot up the street. He should be paying 1,000 times more than me. But we haven't seen any details yet. How are we going to collect it? I'm assuming the Water Authority will collect it in their bills. When? Is it monthly, quarterly, yearly? How about delinquencies? We've had delinquencies on everything that we've ever passed. We let garbage go for 10 years. What do we do? Do we shut off somebody's water when they don't pay their stormwater fee? Lot of questions. I know a couple of you are questioning it. I don't think you should vote on it yet. I don't even think it's even close to being an ordinance. The newspaper wrote about it. Councilperson Liz Allen wrote an op-ed about it that we desperately need money to fix the sewers, the stormwater portion. I don't disagree. But we don't have a revenue problem. We have a spending problem. Every year since 2006, city council, the mayor, has taken at least $1 million a year out of the sewer fund, operating transfer into the general fund. As a way to pay bills, as a way to pay for healthcare, as a way to pay for pensions. That's not what proprietary enterprise funds are for. That money is to stay in that fund. If you collect more than you spend, then you should not collect that much. But you do not bill $26 million to city taxpayers, to other municipalities, and then take a million, which now it's 1.1 million. Ever since Joe Schember's been mayor, it's been 1.1 million. 2018, whoever was on council then voted to transfer 3.4 million from the sewer fund into the general fund. We're talking almost $20 million since 2006. You need $10 million to fix sewers. I know where it is. You spent it already. Stop doing that. You don't need a stormwater maintenance fee to bring in 1.6 million. You need to cut your expenses. None of you voted in the last budget to cut one job. Last year, we had COVID. We had the worst pandemic that's hit this nation in 100 years. You didn't lay one person off. Not one. In the sewer operations, there are 69 people that work. Out of 69, we have a bureau chief, an assistant bureau chief, five leaders, one manager, and nine supervisors. 17 supervisory positions out of 69. We got a problem. In the sewer maintenance, 18 people. 12 are considered sewer team leaders. Now, I'm assuming they get in a truck and they work. I don't know that they do. I don't know that they supervise. We have four crew leaders, two supervisors, and two superintendents. 20 people, more than half of them are management. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? What do we have, Fred?
Can you hear me?
Name and address, please.
This is Franklin Tepfert, 1838 West 2833, Erie, Pennsylvania. I guess I will start with the stormwater fee. My background is in water quality and storm management. I do want to say that if the recommendation to treat all equally sized or within size range residential property the same despite the amount of impervious surface on that property, is a disincentive for people to manage their property limited amount of impervious surface on their property. It's, I know it's more convenient to do it that way, but it doesn't keep. I have people down the block from me who are painting nearly their entire lot. And I will also say I've been recently a candidate. Pennsylvania Native Plant Society meeting and during a scientific talk, as I have been aware for years, grass is nearly similar to impervious surface in its ability to infiltrate and permeate stormwater. Not all vegetation is created equal. As far as the bayfront and the port, I am concerned about how the city is turning over management of overpasses and other amenities to UPM, Erie, fans, the port, whatever. Because how are these overpasses going to be managed? Are they going to be closed at certain hours? We have not had any input into these, sufficient input about how these things are going to be constructed. And I don't like the fact that you're turning, it's just the same way you're doing with our parks. You're turning our parks over to private organizations to put in the facilities they want. Now, I will turn to parks. I will once again recommend that you remove parks from public works. It doesn't belong there. It belongs somewhere that has more of a planning function than an engineering function. There's nobody in the engineering department qualified to run parks as a public facility. You have porta potties in nearly every park in the city and almost none of them are ADA compliant. That is not legal to have porta potties in parks and you have no porta potties that are ADA compliant. Brayden Park, Baldwin Park, Perry Square, another, and Leaf, Leaf Arboretum. I'm concerned about how you've given over management to entities. And a good example is the slides. The barest minimum of the slides, which is nothing, has been done to provide access to those slides to people who have disabilities. People who have disabilities could use those slides. But how are they going to get back up the slope? How are they going to get where their wheelchair is? You need to really consider people with disabilities when you manage projects in this park. I want to comment on the art money. You have a framework for how the art money is going to be spent. When you make large expenditures, as you are proposing to do with sewer funds, you need to show how that affects the balance of what has been set up in the framework. We want to know, we want to be sure that the money that's being set aside for low income and community betterment is not being improperly used for these other projects. And now I want to comment on construction and the curb ring. I hope that the new curb ring contract which you are awarding tonight is going to have more strict requirements than the last two or three or four that I've commented on where, once again, there is not proper management. And I'm going to take a second. You've given everybody else a second. Go and stand over there by the marina by Liberty Park and look up at the hill. Look up at the monstrosities that you folks have approved. You really want that slope to look like that with more properties coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? And a third time, any other citizens to be heard? Kids, that's why we have to say that three times to make sure everybody was listening. Okay. Go ahead, Louis.
Ordinance for final passage, council file number 16247, official ordinance number 522021. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $500 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from Erie Strayer Company. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance, bill number 16247, and now known as official file ordinance number 522021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City council passed official file ordinance 522021, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinance for first reading. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $200 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from Value Home Center. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance number 16248, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16248 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16249, an ordinance of the city establishing stormwater management fees within the city of Erie. Whereas the city of Erie pursuant to authority conferred under the Pennsylvania Stormwater Management Act, Act of October 4th, 1978, Pennsylvania Law 864, number 167 as amended, and the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code, Act 247 of 1968, enacted ordinance number 251998 on May 26, 1998, entitled "Stormwater Management" as Article 945 of the Cod 5 ordinances. And whereas pursuant to the Pennsylvania Stormwater Management Act, the county of Erie on February 11th, 2011, adopted the stormwater management plan. And whereas the stormwater management plan was approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection on March 25th, 2011. And whereas the city of Erie desires to establish fair and equitable user charges to assure that each developed parcel receiving or benefiting from stormwater management services within the city of Erie will pay its proportionate share of the costs of the operation, maintenance, repair, regulatory compliance, administration, replacement, and improvement related to the stormwater management system and stormwater services provided or paid for by the city of Erie. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the council file ordinance number 16249, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council.
Ms. Watson? I take a second to just explain that this is kind of a time-sensitive ordinance. Before it can become law or rule ordinance, it has to be read twice. The intention, I believe, from caucus, from the table up here, we're going to have a study session next Thursday to make sure we totally can get all the facts out. Liz, is that saying it the right way? Getting all the facts out to make sure that people understand why the stormwater thing?
I think Tuesday, Mr. President. I think we're going to do it.
Tuesday?
Tuesday, right? Because Mel can't come on Thursday.
All right, so that being said, we want everybody to know that if we don't get the answers that anybody wants on Tuesday, then we will, though. Okay. Does that mean, Michael? Clement? Go ahead.
I want to go on record that, saying that I am for the implementation of the stormwater fees. But I believe also if we go into study session that they should show us a new matrix that shows different models, models that where people who have properties of a certain size don't pay anything and, you know, and see how that affects the bottom line. Because I'm, you know, if you're in 100 square, under 1,000 square foot, maybe under 2,000 square feet, I don't think that you're the source of the problem. 2,000 square feet, I don't think that you're the source of the problem for our stormwater problems. And so I'd like to see a matrix that, how much will we collect if we exclude those persons?
Exactly. That's the reason, one of the reasons for the study session, so all those things can be put to bed. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I wanted to actually, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I think John Whaley raised some good points about enforcement and delinquencies, and so I'm hoping we will address that. Where I would disagree with the person who spoke at the podium is that when he lumps everyone in from 2006 onward, in 2006, I was working at the newspaper, I was editing the newspaper and education page every week, which ran on Tuesdays during the school year. It was Connect With Your Environment. So that's when, even before then, I had started to become familiar with the stormwater issues that our region faces. It's not just the city of Erie. Ideally, we would be looking at this regionally. Mill Creek has been studying this for a long time and has not bit the bullet and passed it. And I had also shared in caucus that I think we have an opportunity to follow up and look at efficiencies. That 135-page report, the financial report that he referred to does challenge us to say, you know, you can go beyond this. You can look at ways to make the system more efficient. But in caucus, I shared a story I found in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel from February 12, 2001, and I'm just, I'm going to read the headline, "Green Infrastructure Soaks Up Rainwater, Reduces Pollution, and Helps Redevelopment: More Milwaukee Area Projects Are Coming." And I pointed out that the story says that, I'm just going to read this paragraph, because this is kind of near and dear to my heart and makes me sad. "The green infrastructure helped attract Zern Industries LLC, which opened its headquarters in 2016, and a pending plan by Wright High Holding Corporation to develop a corporate campus," said the guy who's the head of their DCED Long Range Planning. So the reason it touches my heart is because I've always felt that Zern Industries is one of the ones that got away, an industry that was founded in Erie, moved its headquarters, I believe, to Texas, and was enticed to come back to Milwaukee and is located in a water district that's doing really cutting-edge research on water quality. So I think we have an obligation to help educate our constituents about what this means and to make sure that this is going to, we're doing the right thing going forward. We have heard, I mean, I've heard from people, why, why wasn't this done before? I totally agree. We've been kind of living on borrowed time and borrowed money for a long time, so I think there's a lot of good that can come out of this, but we have to communicate it.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of pile on. Some of this information has been said, I just want a little more detail. We are discussing with administration to put together further information to really get it out there, to kind of explain it further, because it's more than just what I think some people heard. I know there's been some information put in the newspaper, but there's additional regulatory requirements, there's data that, under aging infrastructure, that we want to share, we want to talk about. There's some best practices that we want to bring in, some examples from other cities that, to, you know, to make some of these decisions. But yeah, I've heard from some business owners, from others, that, you know, which is another tax, but I think it's more, it's not another tax, it's something different that we just need to explain further. So I definitely support the study session to get the information out there, and I'm hoping by sharing this information that we could, you know, get a better understanding for the general public so that, you know, there's an understanding about why we're even looking at this. And we did have a study session in June, but I think maybe it's been a while and we need to, you know, kind of get it out there further and have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Mr. President?
Ms. Winarsky.
First, I didn't know I seconded that, but that's okay. Right now, I'm voting.
You did sign it.
I did sign it, oh yes. I am voting against this at this time, just for the fact that it's still additional expense onto the citizens, the taxpayers themselves. I would personally like to see what our budget consists of for 2022, see if there's going to be any other increases, whether it be garbage or sewer, things recommended in our budget. But once again, with the study session, more questions need to be answered. I know we are using roughly 10 million from the American Rescue money. Can that be adjusted to be 13 million? And can some of that, more of that money be allocated to help the infrastructure end of it? I don't know. Is there money in the budget that maybe we can adjust something here or there to offset this fee, maybe at least for 2022? Because we do have the initial investment from our relief money of roughly 10 million. I mean, I guess there's still more questions. I know it's only the first reading, but at this point, I am not in favor of adding another fee to the citizens. It's all theirs to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winarsky.
Let me ask a procedural question. If Jim didn't want to second this, should I second it?
You can sign it.
Okay. Okay. I didn't want to leave him on the hook.
He can second it, and you don't have to go forward.
Okay.
It was just missed in the back. The second wasn't signed, so anybody could second it at this point and sign it.
I second it, and I'll sign it.
I'll third it and sign it.
My sign was first.
Call for a vote.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan?
I want no for now.
Mr. Keys?
I'm a no.
Mrs. Schough? Mr. Winarsky?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Brzezinski?
Passes four to three.
Motion, council file ordinance number 16249, having been read, is heard by adopted on first reading by City Council, yea's four, nays three, on first reading.
Once again, this puts us in a situation where we can do more due diligence and come up with a final solution here in our November meeting. Thank you. Ms. Winarsky?
President, both move the balance of the agenda.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Witherspoon seconds it?
Separation.
Any separations?
Uh...
Put these young ladies to get home in time to get a good night's sleep.
Number, it's not number, but the middle one about the burn.
Burn? Burn grant? That's a transfer, right?
Yeah.
You want to separate it or just get an answer?
Yeah, just one cat question.
Lamis, can you answer that for us so we don't belabor it?
Oh, the question was, we're transferring amounts in the burn grant, so I know we have that money of grant, so we're just moving it from the account into... But it's all, it's all for everyone. Okay, it was already in that category? Yes. And is this affected by the resignation of the principal who was running this grant? Would that change these numbers or... No, no, we'll be looking to replace her going forward.
Mr. President, I also wonder if we should clarify for the public that the ARP funding that we're approving for those emergency, or for the infrastructure sewer projects is 4.5, it's not 10.5, but the idea is that the remainder would be proposed for the second tranche of funding that we get. So we should just let people know that, because we're going to throw around one big figure and, you know...
Exactly.
So, I mean, it doesn't mean it's not going to come down the pipe, but it's 4.5 this round.
Initially, it's 4.5. Thank you for that.
I don't think we have to separate it, but just let people know.
You don't want that separated, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Voting on the remainder?
Voting on the motion, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schough, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes, yea seven, nay zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Committee reports, we'll start with Mr. Witherspoon this morning.
This morning.
Let's see if you're awake. Yes, see him.
Very short report, Mr. President. I've been working and talking with Mr. Pagani at Pennalec regarding the manhole coverage throughout the city. I've asked him to identify the ones that are owned by Pennalec, and the city is in the process of doing the same thing, because they need to be evened out. And the city has identified one in particular that they are beginning to work on, on the west side. I'm not sure how many we can get done before the asphalt plant closes down, but at least we'll know what we have to do next year, but we'll do the best we can prior to the winter months. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Witherspoon, 10th and State, is that ours or is that the Pennalec's?
Uh, that probably, that's the underground, so that's probably Pennalec.
Thank you. Moving to Ms. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to alliterate one more time with this stormwater potential fee or whatever, understand, and I think all of council understands, and I think with some education, the citizens of Erie will understand that there is a problem there that definitely needs to be addressed. We do have a old system that definitely needs some attention. The only thing I'm looking, as a councilperson and as a resident, as a taxpaying resident of the city, is possibly finding other means to help offset those expenses. I know, and I know Liz corrected me, that maybe in the first phase of it, there's 4.5, and when we get our second check or batch of funding, that that'll, there'll be more put towards it. But with that being said, once again, things can be adjusted. Instead of maybe that 10, we can do 12 or 13, and maybe it won't be on the citizens' back for 2022, but it's something that they can be prepared for a little more that, hey, this is going to happen, this needs to be done. I think this was a little bit of rush to put on that, hey, you're going to have another fee. And when people think of a fee, they're thinking, well, there's, that's just the start, just like the garbage fee of 25 years ago, that was $25, and now is 80 bucks or more, and could be a potential for an increase there.
Not.
So I guess what I'm just trying to say is, we do have issues and a situation that needs to be addressed. We just want to make sure we do our due diligence, hit all the avenues possible before we hit the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winarsky. And Ms. Schough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the people who came from Penn State Baron to watch government in action. Take care and good luck on your classes for this year. Thank you to the Empower people who were here for Empower Erie, and for the people who spoke today. Ms. Sims was here, and I would like to say that there are people who are assisting the homeless in Erie. We do have a problem with suicidal people, people who are addicted, people who are wandering out in the streets with no place to call home. And there are agencies out there willing to assist as needed. There are walking ambassadors out there that you may not even be aware of. There are nurses out there who are volunteering their time on the streets. There are sisters who walk the streets on a regular basis, talking to people. There are regular walkers who are socializing and getting stories told and shared. We have the Downtown Partnership trying to establish another porta potty in the city so that people will have a place to use the restroom. I wish and hope that things definitely will get better, but am thankful for the programs that are already in place. I personally know people who are down and out, and hopefully will be able to have a success story long-term with housing and job situations. So it's just a matter of everybody pulling together, working together, doing what is needed, going out of their way to help. But you can't... I don't know. I was just going to say, you just have to do your best each day and every day, and be thankful that you have what you have. And I just don't want people to think that we don't have anything in place when we are trying to turn the wheels to make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schough. Do we have a list of the homeless, or are they transit, where they come and go?
Every year, they do a count, and they go, and they try to count as many people as they can so that we do get the services. They go out during the nighttime, and they go to the parking garages, they go everywhere and anywhere.
But they count heads, not names, right?
Well, I don't think everyone shares their name, so it's, you know, like, um, we have good mental health services, but not everybody uses mental health services. So some people think that if they give their name, it's going to be a detriment to them, so...
They're on the run. Yeah, I get you. Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended Erie Parking Authority meeting on the 12th. You know, as with many did, there was issues with the Pennalec incident that happened there, many issues with the garage, and I know it took them a couple days to recover, so hopefully we'll improve the situation. And there's a discussion coming up soon to review that. Body camera status, I think I mentioned last time, they're looking at body cameras, and they're looking at, to work with the city of Erie... they're looking at, to work with the City of Erie Police to possibly piggyback on their account. So, that's still a discussion piece because of the issues that they've had. The municipal service agreement, as a reporter passed, and Renee has noted in the past, that's on hold for now for the plan that's been set forth. It's still being reviewed. And also, the Erie Parking Authority did note the, there's some ordinance changes they'd like to possibly propose while that agreement's on hold for now, so that we'll be hearing from them on whatever they're going to propose within the next, you know, next couple of months, and we'll, that'll be brought to council and administration, whatever that is. I wanted to break up another item. I know Kathy had mentioned this before, but the whole public restroom issues in the downtown area, you know, I heard from many organizations, businesses, you know, as a liaison to the Parking Authority, I hear that at every meeting, there's always issues. And also from business owners, you know, the garage I go to downtown is constantly having, having issues. I did share an idea with administration and council, possibly repurposing the mailroom back here for restrooms, you know, that may not make sense at all, so we don't know what's going to happen there. I'm just trying to come up with some type of solution. But I'm hoping that we come up with some ideas. I know there's been several ideas of temporary facilities put out there, but we need to have some answers because it's definitely, there's a lot of businesses that are being affected by this, and even I've heard of a tenant in a building that's looking at not renewing their lease because they're, they don't like to be in a garage where they smell that and see that. So, again, not a topic no one likes to talk, no anyone to talk about, but I'm bringing it up because I think we need to resolve the issue. Thank you, Kathy, again, for honoring Empower Erie and for council honoring Empower Erie. It was an honor to be on the board. You know, I was honored to serve and contribute any efforts to that group, and I'm glad we just got through to be able to bring the community college to Erie, so it's a good thing, and thank you. I attended, as with other councilpersons, the Sisters St. Joseph had their Three Sisters Park opening today, the celebration. Again, a lot of great work that's been done before. That lot was just in terrible shape. There was a lot of just, you know, things dumped on that area. So, they, they've done a lot of great things with the transform of the lot, and now it's a city park, and, you know, inspiring a lot of hope for the neighborhood and all the people. But there was a lot of people that contributed to that project, too many to name now, but it was great to go to that opening, a very uplifting celebration, and I just want to congratulate the Sisters St. Joseph for their continued great work in Little Italy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Allen?
I, the Blighted Property Review Committee met last week, and Mel attended, and if you have a chance, I believe you can watch that on YouTube. Every month, we see what bad shape a lot of these properties are in, but this one, I think it was particularly poignant and shocking. There was a house in the 1600 block of Chestnut, which is currently occupied, but no one's quite sure who's living in there. The owner fled to Springfield out in the West County, and the utility bills are still being paid. And later in the week, we found out that at Blighted Property Review, that there had been one overdose there and a, like a smoldering fire in the backyard. And later in the week, the police chief said there actually had been six overdoses on this block. So, blight, it isn't just about, like, peeling paint. It does take in all the human aspects of what's going on out there. And I think when Mel came to that meeting, it was a good way to demonstrate that before properties get to the blighted property stage, and then, you know, they go on to whatever the next stages will be, there are many attempts to have code violations fixed and to have fines imposed and have work plans made, and the work just doesn't get done, so it can be very discouraging. I also went to the land bank meeting, and the judicial sale is coming up November 17th and 18th, and some people pointed out that it would really be important to pay attention to what's going on with the judicial sales, which are now being conducted virtually, because out-of-town buyers are snapping up some of these properties. They think it's a bargain, then they don't have the money to fix the stuff, so pay attention to that. In particular, there was a woman from Staten Island who bought a property on Warful, can't fix it up, wanted to donate it to the land bank, not really out of the goodness of her heart. She, there's back taxes, so the land bank said, thanks, but no thanks, and is working on developing policies on donations. In some cases, donations could work out, but not if they're just trying to get out of paying their property taxes. And she has some other blighted property in Erie. So, anyhow, just pay attention if somebody wants to go on and follow the judicial sale November 17th and 18th. I went to the Pennsylvania Municipal League, the fire chief drove us, the assistant lent a truck came, and the mayor came, and I would like to maybe do a bigger, I know you guys like, don't really like it when I write a lot of stuff, but there were a lot of good takeaways there. There were sessions on ARP funding, and the mayor and I both, we went to those. We have to be really meticulous in vetting proposals and how we're awarding money. One of the best ones I went to was a session on GIS mapping, which is geographic information systems, and the example was actually stormwater management. But you could adapt this to a lot of different information to tell the story to the public about what's going on. Like, for stormwater, you would be able to click on there, and you would be able to show, you know, the, where the storm line was, the tiles were from 1917. Imagine being able to go on there online and get that additional information. Or with blighted property, imagine being able to go on there and see how many fines there are, that the taxes aren't paid, that the water bill, and to actually see pictures of that. So, I think that has real potential. We heard from an attorney about COVID, what you can ask about vaccination status. It started off with a really good session on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And in Lancaster, it's the YWCA and the Community Action Program, so the equivalent of GCAP, which is leading the effort on, in those two fronts. Lancaster has a very lively, dense downtown. That was cool. But the, on the flip side, the mayor and I both met people who had been to Erie. We met somebody from Reading, somebody from Lockhaven, somebody from Johnstown. They're like, Erie's a great place, so that was nice to hear. At these conferences, and I know you guys get emails, we're always being approached by vendors and salespeople, and so you're like, okay, I'm going out the door, but I'll listen to you for five minutes. But there was somebody who called me and wanted to talk about cybersecurity, and I do think that would be a good, we should have an update on that because we know there have been ransomware attacks on different government agencies at all levels. I went on a two-hour Zoom on gun violence in Pennsylvania, and one of, it was really good. Michael Outlaw was also on this, heard really sad stories from Philadelphia, realized that we already have a lot of good programs in place. One of the things they said on the gun violence Zoom was they talked about, like, doing some text messaging to get the word out about trauma-informed care. And I was thinking, you know, if we had a text alert that you could sign up for the city, we could let people know about ARP funding, you know, when the meetings are, you know, keep people informed that way. Because I went to the Central City Alliance Neighborhood Watch the other day, and the big question was, how do we inform people about what's going on? We have, you know, it's really hard to keep in touch with people now, but I think everybody has cell phones, not everybody's on social media, but a lot of people have cell phones. I also went to a really informal discussion at Gridley Park the other day. That was a great session because people, probably about 15 people there, and it was really grassroots, and the neighbor said, this is a neighborhood park, not a destination park, but we'd like to see some improvement. So, I thought it was a really good model about how you can listen to people. And I just want to make sure, we have a Pennalec Zoom on Monday at 1:00, right? And Kathy, Mel, and I are going to walk in the central neighborhood, neighborhood tomorrow to look at some issues that were raised at that, at the Neighborhood Watch. If anybody else wants to join us, it's at 4:00, we're meeting at 23rd and Holland.
I take this to Mr. Keys. Want to turn that on? Thank you for your report, Miss Keys.
Real short, I attended the park dedication with the Sisters, the Sisters of St. Joseph's today. They do phenomenal work in the center of our city. And, and so, I'd just like to, you know, I keep up with some of the other things, too. And so, what I noticed from, like, the blight review is that a large number of the people who are, or even in the tax cell, are deceased. And so, you know, how do we, how do we fix that problem, you know, or how do we address it with the heirs and, or people who may not know their heirs, or may not know that they may be entitled to property, you know, that their parents or their aunts or uncles had before it gets into a blighted state? And so, I think that that's something that, you know, might can be looked at a little harder to make sure that, you know, these properties don't fall through the cracks so then we're trying to knock them down, or we have to blight them, or we have to demolish them.
Thank you, Mike. By the way, there is a whole industry at the courthouse, people who search those houses. They look for houses that don't have a mortgage on them anymore, and then maybe some delinquencies in taxes, and that's how they, how do you find them? It's, it's a tough job. I just have a couple of things to say. I was glad that Ms. Schoff brought up the idea of the homeless situation, and I admire all of the mental health agencies out there and the job that they do, but it's a come-to-them type of job. If we have any money in that ARP money, I would really like to beef up the mental health folks. We have to identify those people on the street. I can understand, like Kathy said, they may be afraid to tell you who they are, but we have to know which ones are capable of living on their own, which ones don't realize they're doing anything wrong when they make the parking garages smell. It's a big problem, and it's getting louder and louder, and it's not going to go away unless we address it and help these folks. Some of them are almost a cult. They just live that way because it's a real nice, easy way to live. But it's not, not an easy one. I'm sorry about that. The other thing, Airbnb, it was Ms. Whipple, she said that I was a firm person against the Airbnbs. Bottom line is, everybody likes bees in Airbnb, but nobody wants one next door. That's the conundrum we have when we're dealing with this thing. She's partially right, because one of the things that I put a stop on with the Airbnb was regulation. I want to know how we are going to regulate it, how are we going to make sure that the people that are doing these things actually have the, have signed up and are actually clean as far as owing any bills to us in the city. They assure me that they're going to treat it just like the long-term rentals. I want to see it more completely. I think, are we due to have that pretty soon, Renee, the next one? Okay. So, again, we'll keep that, we'll keep the administration's feet to the fire, so to speak. That being said, Mr. Betza?
Before Mr. Betza talks, can I just follow up on Ed's comments? I think, I know people don't want more study sessions, but I think the mental health thing, maybe, I think a good person to listen to might be Jamie Russo from the Police Department. You know, he was a case manager before he became a police officer, and I think he might, maybe even if he just came to caucus. And I know the library has peer, what are called peer navigators, because the library has, deals with a lot of people who have various issues, whether it's homelessness or not. And I was walking on West 38th Street yesterday, and I saw right by the Y, I took a picture of it, there was a shopping cart, a suitcase, a couple of bags, and I think a tent that had been pulled in. So, I know Kathy knows where, not everywhere, Kathy is really familiar with where people are finding makeshift housing, but it was just kind of a, I don't know, an eye-opener to see that it was all set up in there. Anyhow, so I'm glad you're mentioning it, but it would probably also be helpful to know how the county is going to be spending money in that regard, too. But we know that it's a city issue, too. How can we collaborate? What's the best way for a city approach in collaboration with the county? I didn't mean to jump in there, Ed, but I just wanted to let people know. I think Jamie Russo, I mean, hearing his experience has really been useful to me as a councilperson.
Yeah, so many people are jaundiced. I had a situation like that. I saw the guy standing there with a sign saying, my kids don't have food, so I gave him 10 bucks. Four days later, I'm coming down Peach Street, this guy's getting into a Mercedes. I'm thinking, oh, I got my 10 bucks back. I mean, and unfortunately, so many people don't have the understanding that Kathy has, an example, with the homeless. It's a very, very technical situation for anybody to really get a handle on, but I think if we can get more people involved and more of a reach out than a reach in, you know, they've been on the street for four or five years or whatever, they're not going to come to us now. They're just looking for another place to be for a while. And that being said, I'm sorry, Mr. Betza, it's your turn.
Well, I have nothing to say, so I'm glad, I'm glad you filled my time. That's all I have.
Okay. And anybody else on the line? Cat? Who's here? Oh, Teresa, you there?
She might be, hold on.
Is she?
Teresa, you still on?
You don't think we had her dozed off? In all the excitement? Well, if she comes back, we'll get her. But in the meantime, Ms. Lenis?
I'll take Ed's time and Teresa's time. No, I'm just kidding.
I thought you were so off in five minutes.
First, I thought I would just share a few things about the stormwater fee for any residents who might still be watching. I'm going to take this down. So, the small tier is about 9,600 homeowners with 500 to 1,200 square feet of impervious area would pay $12 a year. The fee would be on the property tax bill included as a separate line item, so it would just be paid with the property taxes. Medium-tier homes are about 9,900 homeowners of between 1,200 and 1,550 square feet of impervious surface would pay $24. And the larger tier has about 9,200 homeowners with more than 1,550 square feet who would pay $36 a year. Beyond that, the businesses, nonprofits, and public entities would pay a fee calculated based on a billing unit, which would be equal to 2,136 square feet. So, for every 2,136 square feet, they would pay $24. So, you have, you know, some nonprofits, some businesses with a lot of cement, parking lots, you know, sidewalks.
You think we're going to see the bishop here?
And so, those entities would pay a lot more. So, it's a very equitable fee based on how much stormwater runoff you're contributing to the system. You know, these issues have been occurring for decades, and we know from what's happened recently, we have clay pipes underground that are over 100 years old that are crumbling. What's, what's nice about this fee is not only that it's equitable, but also this funding would be used only for the purposes of getting us into MS4 compliance with the EPA and DEP, and also taking care of the long-term sustainability of the system. So, the 10.5 million in total that we're looking to fund through the ARP is only for a fraction of the city. There, what we need to really do is take a proactive look at all of it, and are at all in GIS right now. Our Public Works team is still operating from public, from paper maps. The idea is that we would have GIS, and we would be able to see the condition of all the pipes. So, just, you know, for the 1.6 to 1.7 million dollars that would be collected annually, about 300 to 350,000 would be spent on operating costs, 420 to 480,000 on planned capital costs each year, and then about 780 to 870,000 a year. And then about 780 to 870,000 a year could be used, either set aside for future priority projects or used on projects as they, as they become needed. This will, again, enable us to have a sustainable system moving forward and ensure that we're not having to float bonds or take out loans that were going to cost the city more in the long run. We want to get this, this taken care of now. So I just, I wanted to share a few things there. And we can share additional numbers on Tuesday night, but, you know, I know there's a question of, well, what if we eliminated, you know, homes? You know, that, based on the calculations I gave, I mean, if you eliminated, like, the, the bottom 9,600 homes, that, that would cause $115,200 to be lost from the calculation. And you can multiply out the rest. In terms of ARP funding, infrastructure is one of the uses that can be, that we can spend ARP funding on. We are, in the next few meetings, going to be bringing a lot of projects to you. Some of the things that were mentioned tonight, like housing repairs, home, you know, first-time homeowner, homeowner programs, lead rehab, all these different things that we talked about in the study session with the Redevelopment Authority. Those programs are going to be coming forward to you at the November 3rd council meeting. We want to get that funding out to residents who need it. And then in terms of the Department of Economic and Community Development, we'll be meeting with Councilwoman Allen and Councilman Witherspoon and Councilman Keys to review what we're looking at in terms of grants and loans for small businesses, minority entrepreneurs, you know, those folks who are most severely impacted by COVID-19, funds to, you know, remediate our industrial blighted properties. Bruce Katz was in town on Monday and Tuesday, and he's helping us develop kind of our ARP playbook so that we can take a look at what our top priorities are, and then look to federal and state and local philanthropic and private donors to help us leverage our funding so that we can capitalize on that and, and bring in a lot more dollars for what we're looking at, you know, what we really want to do. We want to definitely leverage the impact that we can have.
Renee, how are we going to help the people with a down payment? Do they have to have the house to, under contract, or?
I'm not sure the specifics of it. I think that they do, they would, we would come in as a second, I think, and then we would pay, we would pay the PMI, so they wouldn't have to pay the PMI.
Twenty percent down?
Yeah. And then in terms of, you know, the homeless, we have been meeting, another thing that we've been doing is we've been meeting for several months now with Erie County Department of Human Services, Erie County Coordinated Entry, which is 814 Shelter, Safe Harbor Behavioral Health, the police, and the Erie Community Foundation to talk about the homelessness issue and the mental health issues and drug and alcohol addiction. And, you know, what services exist, where are the gaps, and how can we use our ARP funding collectively to resolve some of these issues? So you mentioned Sergeant Russo. He's, he is a great asset. And we're also hoping to have another, another study session with you about that, specifically homelessness, the policing, the mental health issues. I think it would be a really, I think it would be a real eye-opener and would help us to think through some of those things. And I know it's going to be a tough fall with budget sessions and everything, but. And then also, in terms of the parks, Ms. Sims mentioned the parks. That's another thing that we have built into, you know, what we're looking at for ARP dollars is we really want to be able to do a participatory budgeting process where we're going out to the community and we're asking residents, what kinds of things do you want to see in your parks? And, you know, like you've seen, Bayview Park has had a lot of improvements recently. They got input from the residents about what they wanted, and our Public Works team helped them to be able to install all that. We want to do that in the other city parks as well with ARP funding. So those are some other things that we'll be bringing to you. We've been working really hard on trying to get all this figured out so we can bring it to you in a timely manner and give you time to digest smaller pieces at one time instead of bringing everything at once. We're trying really hard to get on a good schedule.
Thank you.
It's a lot, I know, I'm sorry.
No, no.
That's all I'll share for now.
Thanks, Renee. You know, the funny thing about the city of Erie, the way it's, it was built on clubs and softball fields. That's just the way it was. It was a family outing. Growing up as a kid, even American Meter used to have a great team one day. My dad worked there. They would fill 10th and S. People would be standing almost on the street watching games. All that stuff kind of faded away, the sharpshooters, all the clubs. And as a result, the clubs are there, but the guys playing softball aren't, and we have empty fields. And I'm glad we're attacking. Thank you very much, Ms. Brennan.
Yes, I just wanted to make one comment. Just a thought to Renee, the, you know, like zoning. I wonder if we could have, you know, because of the stormwater issue, if we could have less parking required. I know a lot of cities are looking at their parking in their zoning. Because if, yeah, it's, it's more of a problem in Milkerig, of course, and Summit with the big malls and such. But if there's new development, we could take a look at that just to kind of, you know, try to lessen that requirement, which, you know, every, every bit helps. Then also, like roadway widths, you know, we talked about the Bayfront Parkway and talk about Bolivars and those type of things. All that would contribute to make less width of roadway, more green space. I know it's easy to say, but just, I think we just need to keep talking about these items because it, it helps the situation with the stormwater, and it also helps to make, you know, beautify the area.
No, that's a good point. We're working on that in several areas on the Bayfront Parkway, the downtown streets, Streetscape Master Plan, and on the East Bayfront Parkway at 6th and 12th. We're looking at narrowing, narrowing lanes there too, and then improvements on 12th Street as well.
Renee, I keep telling people who have contacted me about ARP that we do now have an ARP manager. We have the finance person, but we also have, I think I put that in the briefing to City Council, but we have a, a new person on board. And I'm hoping that, you know, at some point, we'll have like a dashboard where people will be able to see, you know, I think we have some regular active citizens who want to know how much, how much is allocated, how much has been spent already. And I think that's coming, would be my hunch.
Yes, it is.
Or my hope, my hunch and my hope.
Yes, it is. And our, and I should have mentioned, our Council of Advisors is also formed now too with representatives from all the mayors, different councils that he has. And that, the first meeting is this Friday at 3:00. And, and again, Mel and Michael and Liz will sit on that, so.
Okay, you think we're good to order, we're done? Say goodnight, folks. Thank you very much.
City Council adjourns at 9:13 PM. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon.